The Ray Hanania Show is brought to you by the U.S. Arab Radio Network and sponsored by Arab News Newspaper, the Middle East leading English language publication with print and online editions in Saudi Arabia, Dubai, France, Japan, Pakistan, England, and the United States. Listen to live radio every Wednesday at 5:00 PM Eastern in Detroit, Washington DC, New York, and Ontario, Canada, or watch the live broadcast on facebook.com/ArabNews. The Ray Hanania Show is rebroadcast in Chicago at 12 noon on Thursday. For more information on the radio stations, live Facebook broadcasts, and podcasts, visit arabnews.com. And now, here's your host, columnist and U.S. Special Correspondent for Arab News, Ray Hanania.
Good afternoon, everybody, in Greater Detroit, Washington DC, Upper New York, Ontario, Canada, and Chicagoland, Chicagoland and rebroadcast on Thursday. I'm Ray Hanania. We're live on all these stations, but Chicago, we're going to rebroadcast there, but hopefully we'll be getting live with them also sometime soon. I'm the U.S. Special Correspondent for Arab Newspaper, the leading English language newspaper in the Middle East region. We're broadcasting live here every Wednesday afternoon at 5:00 PM Eastern Time on four radio stations: WNZK AM 690 in Greater Detroit, WDMV AM 700 in Washington DC, and WTOR AM 770 in Ontario, Canada. And like I said, we'll rebroadcast the show in Chicago on Thursdays at 12 noon on WNWI AM 1080, which covers the huge Chicagoland region of more than eight million people. You can also listen to this show online at arabradio.us, and if you want, you could watch the radio show video by visiting Arab News Facebook page at facebook.com/ArabNews. This afternoon on radio, we're going to be talking about Ramadan with two guests. And by the way, Ramadan Mubarak to all the Muslim community here in America and across the world and everybody listening. In our first segment, we're going to be speaking with Jamal Osman, a member of the Minneapolis City Council who introduced a law that was adopted that allows for the public broadcast of the Adhan, prayers between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM every day. Later in segment two, we're going to speak with Rawan Redwan, a veteran journalist and writer at Arab News about the importance of Ramadan, how it is observed in the Middle East and in Saudi Arabia, where two of the most important Islamic holy sites are located, and why it's so important. Although Ramadan is now recognized by many government officials in the United States, including the President, the White House, I think it's an important topic to explore on this first show of the second season of the Ray Hanania Show, to help non-Muslims here in the United States understand why it is important and what it represents. And by the way, this month in April, we celebrate all the major holidays for all three of the world's largest monotheistic religions, Islam, Christianity, and Judaism. On April 17, there's traditional Christians, traditional Christians will celebrate Easter, and April 24th, Orthodox Christians, mainly the Arab Christians, will celebrate Easter then. We talk about that during next week's show. And Jewish people will be celebrating Passover this month also, April 16 through April 23rd. Right now, I want to welcome my first guest, Jamal Osman, who is a member of the Minneapolis City Council representing the 6th Ward. Osman introduced and sponsored a new law that allows the Adhan to be prayed and broadcast throughout the city between the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. He was born in Somalia and moved to the United States from Kenya when he was 14 years old. He obtained a degree from Metro State University. His professional experience includes working as a resident advocate in the nonprofit sector and is a certified mental health trainer. He was elected as a Democrat to the Minneapolis City Council in August 2020, serving through January 2024. Welcome to the radio show, Osman. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much, Ray, for having me today. Had the Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak to all of us who celebrate the holy month of Ramadan. I'm glad to be joining you today. So thank you so much for having me.
And you know, as a Christian Arab, I feel like I'm Christian by religion, but Muslim by culture, because we, our religions really are so close, and many Americans really don't understand Islam. They don't really even recognize the Arab Christians as being Christians. They see us as being different, and it's so ironic. But when I read that you had introduced the law, and it was passed by the city council to allow the reading of the Adhan prayer, the recitation of the Adhan prayers, that's amazing to me. And I think you're the first city that's ever done that in the United States, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yes, a major city. And I would say that, you know, city of Minneapolis has been a progressive city, a city that welcomes money Muslim immigrants in Minneapolis. We have a large East African population here, of course Arabs too, that live in this community. In city of Minneapolis alone, we have close to 100,000 Muslims practicing. We have over 30 mosques, or maybe 40 mosques in the city of Minneapolis that were able to call to prayer inside. And we also have three council member elected officials in the city of Minneapolis. We have 13 council members plus the mayor, and three Muslim council members that have been elected. And I was the second Muslim elected official.
I think it's pretty important that with only three members out of 13 members, three of them being Muslim, is that correct?
Yes.
You were able to convince the other non-Muslim members to agree and respect the Islamic religion, the Muslim people in Minneapolis. That's, you don't see that in cities across this country. Oftentimes, you see conflict, but to see that you needed a majority, correct, of the city council, which means, which means that you had to have at least, what, three, seven, let's see, three, four, my math isn't, is not good?
Seven.
You needed seven members, which means four more non-Muslims to go along with their proposal, and they supported it. That must mean that they have great respect for the Muslim community in Minneapolis.
Yes, they have great respect, and it wasn't really that difficult even to convince them. This was something that the law already allowed us to do. We just had to put a resolution together.
How is that?
Well, the audience, amplified noise audience on the books says the CERN amount of can be broadcasted from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We just had to add it 15 amplified.
The decibels.
Decibels, thank you for that. And this, it's not the first time the call to prayer was also accepted in city of Minneapolis. Last three years, the mayor had exclusive order, or like, he used his power to make the month of Ramadan for one specific mosque in Cedar Riverside neighborhood, which has dominant Muslim community called prayer. So we hear the call to prayer, and you know, the emotional attachment with the folks that live here, the countries that they grew up, they were able to hear the Adhan, and now hearing the Adhan from their comfort of their house was really moving. The mayor, city council members here, and the state of Minnesota has been really kind to Muslim community. And it says that a lot from our state and our city. We have many elected officials in every government level here. We have the county, the state, the city, the school board, the Congress, Ilhan Omar, most of you know. So it's a progressive, beautiful community that we call it home. So it wasn't really surprising, my colleagues, to support this. And it wasn't just also the call to prayer. The resolution we passed was to honor the month of Ramadan in the city of Minneapolis, how important it is to the community. And it was just a beautiful day on March 24th.
Now, is the Adhan, does this law cover the entire year all the time, or just during the month of Ramadan?
Entire year.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yes.
Now, I'm Christian, so I don't, you know, pretend to be an expert on Islam or Ramadan, but I know that Muslims pray several, many times each day.
Five times, yeah.
Five times, but I believe it starts early though, at 4:30.
True. Well, there will be four prayers that will be accepted, leaving the Fedjir, Sath Fedjir behind. And, you know, the mosques here and the community are happy, but some of the mosques here and the leaders of the mosques, they, Mesjid, they realize they want to be respectful to non-pleaders, and they want to be respectful to their neighbors. And some of them actually decided not to call to prayer right away, but to have community engagement, welcome their neighbors, letting them know the policy of the city now allows us to call to prayer from the rooftops of the mosques. And, and I think the experience and the feedback we had for the entire city of Minneapolis has been nothing but positive. And like I say, three years ago, the mayor used his power to allow one mosque, and it was just joyful. And I believe that right now, having the entire year called to prayer, exceptional, of course, the Sath Fedjir, will be something beautiful that money community that are Muslims or non-Muslims will be.
I think you mentioned that there are how many mosques in Minneapolis, 33?
Probably more than that.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. Just the city of Minneapolis, and of course, surrounding areas. We have close to probably, I would say, the state of Minnesota, close to 400,000 Muslims, practicing Muslims. That's just the data for 2020, 2020, I believe.
In Chicago, we have about 450 Arabs, and I think, you know, maybe, including Muslim Arabs and non-Muslim Arabs, maybe we have, I would guess, maybe 800,000 for the entire Chicagoland area of Northern Illinois. How, what was it that drew so many Muslims to Minneapolis and Minnesota? You're in the middle of the heartland of the United States. People don't think of it as an industrial city like Chicago, New York, Detroit, Los Angeles. They kind of think like, you know, there's some cities, big cities, but also a lot of farmland. What, what drew Muslims to Minnesota?
That is the million question, the million dollar question. I think that a cold, extremely cold state to find hot desert East African Muslims here, it's, you know, it's a big question. But of course, you know, 1990s, that's when majority of East African Muslim communities started coming. It's, it was, it was a welcoming state, very progressive state, and that really welcomed the immigrant community here, and also their jobs that were available in this, brought them here. And right now, I would say, the state of Minnesota has been the leading state when it comes to Muslim immigrants. We elected our first Congress, which is Keith Ellison before Ilhan. And we have a major power here, and it's welcoming and beautiful community. I lived here 22 years, I have beautiful five, five children that grew up here, and I wouldn't trade here for anywhere else. I know it's a little cold, and, but when the spring comes along, you kind of forget about the extreme cold.
You can get a lot of snow in Minnesota, far more than we get in Chicago. And I, and I know that a lot of my friends who are in the Middle East often ask me what snow is. They may see it, you know, a little bit of it. You go to Minnesota, you're going to see a lot of snow, right?
Yes. And I would say anybody from the Middle East that has the background of living in deserts in that area, if you want to hear the Adhan, you can come, come meet us, hear the Adhan at the same time, and do ice fishing and then snowballing and all that fun stuff during the winter time. But make sure you gear up, because it's really cold.
And you can watch the snowfall while that's happening. Now, what was the response from, was there any, was it, what was the vote on the city council? Did you have everybody, or was it divided a little bit?
No, it was everybody. And it wasn't just voted, actually. They commented and welcomed. And we had many council members that are of a different faith. I had talked to a council member who is, who practiced Judaism and is Jewish, and she said, this is really beautiful. And, you know, it's about time that they recognized our difference faiths. And one of the things that she mentioned was that, you know, we have the Christmas off, we have the Christmas Day off, but you know, Judaism and Islam, we have days like the Eid and Hanukkah, and different days that we might not be off work, working. And maybe one day we will get there. And I would add that, you know, the city of Minneapolis, the school, city, school board also passed to make Eid a holiday. So the kids will be home the day after Ramadan falls. So it's a, it's a beautiful city inclusion and making sure that everybody is treated fair, and we are really reflecting everybody's faith and passing policies that are fair to all faiths. And it's been nothing but positive. And I thank for my colleagues and the city of Minneapolis.
I want to remind all our listeners that they're listening to the Ray Hanania Show. We're broadcasting through syndication in Greater Detroit, on WNZK AM 690, in Washington DC, in WDMV AM 700, parts of Virginia and Maryland, and on WTOR AM 770 radio in Upper New York and Ontario, Canada. This program will be rebroadcast in Chicago on Thursdays at 12 noon at WNWI AM 1080, which covers the Chicagoland region. You can always listen to the show online at arabradio.us and watch the radio show video by visiting Arab News Facebook page at facebook.com/ArabNews. We're hosted by U.S. Arab Radio Network and Leila Al-Husseini, a really a pioneer in Arab-American and Muslim journalism in the United States, and we're sponsored by Arab News, again, the leading English language newspaper in the Middle East. I'm on the line with Jamal Osman, a member of the Minneapolis City Council representing the 6th Ward, and he introduced a new law that allows the Adhan to be prayed and broadcast through the city of Minneapolis between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM every day, all year long. And it was just passed, correct? And kind of, you know, important because it coincides with Ramadan taking place now.
Yes, my office has worked last nine months trying to figure it out, really working with the city attorney and the staff to make sure that, you know, we are aligning with all laws that have existed and making sure that this is something that will, will get supported. So we spent nine months really working on, and we waited this time because we just wanted to make sure that we line up with Ramadan and the holy month coming along. And it's just wonderful that community really welcomed. We had many people that have contacts us out of the state or even surrounding cities. And like, we have a twin city, St. Paul, that doesn't have that law. And right now, a big city like Minneapolis, we're able to have this law passed, and I'm sure cities that are neighbors and also outside cities and bigger cities in the United States will be able to follow this. And we hear the Christian bell, you know, the church from the bell, and we hear that during our lunchtime, different times, you know. And then, Adhan, I think also lasts about three minutes long. And if we have the windows of those four prayers and not having, not having 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM go off, it's something that community have welcomed. And it's been positive, and I'm really glad to be part of this, especially in the holy month of Ramadan.
Now, I know in the Middle East, sometimes, I remember my first, very first visit to Bethlehem, where my mother's family's from, my father's family's from Jerusalem. I was in the hotel, I just got there, had to be in the 1980s, I think. And I was awakened at 4:30 in the morning by the call to prayer. And I go, wow, you know, I'd never heard that before. It's first time for me going back to the Middle East. And, but for three minutes, isn't that long? You know, to allow that, I think is very progressive, you know, for your state. And I'm assuming that the decibel level isn't that high that it's annoying. It's just enough, right, for people around the mosque?
Yes. Yes, I think the purpose is not just broadcast it for the entire city to hear. The purpose is to broadcast it like in the area that's close to it. People that are standing at the parking lot, trying to come into the building or, or cross the street from the mosque. So they know it's time to pray. And we're, we have created these policies to make sure that we are being equal to the communities and not really trying to offend anyone, or make sure that we're not disturbing anyone. Like I say, it's been positive. This happened three, it's been happening in three, three years for the month of Ramadan for one mosque, and now making it the entire city has been positive. And like, the mosque want to be respectful, the Muslim community want to be respectful to their non-Muslim community in the area. And they do want to be, you know, respectful and have that conversation with them. Some of them have decided to wait until they have that conversation with their neighbors. So we live in a, in a beautiful country, a country with laws, and we're not breaking the laws, but just following the laws and making the laws that reflect entire community.
When, have people, you said people were reaching out to you from other cities?
Yes.
Correct, to find out how you did it? Because, you know, in politics, we call it a cookie cutter law, that other people are going to emulate and follow. What have, what have they been asking and what have you been telling them, you know, to do the same thing if they wanted to do that in their cities?
Well, they have been asking, of course, how is, how do you made it possible, and what is the reaction? And I would say, just look into the state law. Maybe it's already allowed to broadcast amplified noise. And when I say amplified noise, I mean, we have the bars and the clubs, you know, they do play loud music, and they follow the law. So it might not be as high as that, and just making it entire community instead of specifically religious. We try to focus, make it, this is entire, anybody who wants broadcast or whatever during this time can do that. It's not just the mosque that allowed. If you want to, you know, follow the state law and the city law for amplified noise. And right now, you're not required to have a permit. We made it that. And I was telling them, that is as, as easy as it was, and we have worked and make sure that we checked every box that, and we have, and been telling them it's doable, it's doable. A freely community is welcoming this. It's a beautiful thing. And I would say, I want to go back. People say, why do you want to do this? You know, people, right now, it's the 21st century. People have alarm clocks, whatever, you know what time it is. It's not, because people doesn't know what time to pray. It's just the feeling of inclusion. And really, for me, my experience, I grew up in Somalia, where we hear the call to prayer everywhere we go. And right now, if I visit the Middle East or any country that is practicing Muslim, we hear the Adhan. It's a beautiful thing. And for my kids' first time to hear the mosque, close to the mosque, when we are close to the mosque, to hear the Adhan, it's a life experience for them. It's a life-changing experience. It's something they enjoy, something they never experienced before that. And that's what it's all about. It's all about that inclusion and really making it home, home.
And that's an important point you bring up. There is a law in Chicago that says you can play music up to a certain decibel level.
Sure.
You know, and that decibel level, the law says, if you're above it, you could be fine. But as long as you're below that decibel level, you can play whatever you want. And you could have a party in your backyard, you could have a band playing out of your garage. And I think that it was ingenious. How did you come up with the idea to do it? Because when I think about it, this could have been done years ago, under the existing laws, even in Chicago.
Yeah, I wonder, you know, no one ever looked into it. But for me, it was really serving what my community need is. And I realized, having the mayor approving a call to prayer and how people accepted, and how excited it was, I look into that laws, and I work with closely with the city attorney and staff. And thanks to my colleagues and my office, we have come up and decided to move this resolution forward, and it's been, it's been nothing but beautiful. And I would say, Chicago or any other city, just look into your laws, work with, with the city and your colleagues, and, you know, work what's best for your community. And for me, it was, it was coming, either me or next council member, but it was something that happened to me, and, and I'm glad I'm part of it.
Yeah, this is a phenomenal story. When I heard it, I said, I got to get a hold of this guy. Because not only did he come up with a very interesting law, but it was ingenious. Nobody else had ever thought of it. And like I said, the churches ring their bells. You know, it's a symbol. What, you know, some people find the bells annoying, but it's part of the Christian religion. You know, we respect their, everybody's religion. And I think what you're doing in Minneapolis is a great example of why this country is so lucky to have the rich diversity that we have. And when we get along together, it makes it even greater. I mean, it's just phenomenal.
Well said, Ray. Yeah, I definitely agree with you. It's a, it's a, it's a country that allow us to practice our faith. You know, people are happy here to live and raise their family. And it's been nothing but joy to be part of this process and live, call city of Minneapolis home. So my community appreciates, and I think, I'm hoping and wishing that entire country looks into the example of Minneapolis.
And I know that, listen, I was born and raised here in the United States. I know that there's discrimination out there. A lot of discrimination comes from not understanding who I am. It's not that they really hate me, they fear the unknown. That's what Americans are about. Once they know you, 99% of them find that they can love you, support you. There's room for everybody. There's always that 1%, though, that no matter what you do, they're going to be mad. Has that 1% popped up in Minneapolis? I mean, has there been any repercussions at all?
For, for the matter of the resolution?
Yes.
We haven't really hear that at all. But of course, that 1%, it's always there. Growing up, coming in this country before September 11, and being in school, September 11, and, you know, of course, getting bullied by, by kids, by calling you different names and so on. We all experienced that. And I think, like you say, you said it beautifully, it's ignorance, it's fear. And once people get to know you and see you as anyone else, it's, that acceptance is there. And United States came from a long way. I think, yeah, you know, maybe last four years, Donald Trump kind of put us behind. Let me get into politics a little bit.
Listen, all the politicians are the same in America. I know they single him out, but everybody gives us a hard time, no matter what.
That 1% is always there, and those that benefit from the fear and division within, within society, it's always a threat to the greater humanity. But I kind of look over that and just move forward and trying to, you know, bring positive to the, to the community wherever I am.
My guest on the line is Jamal Osman, a member of the Minneapolis City Council representing the 6th Ward. Osman introduced and sponsored a new law that allows the Adhan to be prayed and broadcast throughout the city between the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And he was ingenious in looking at the law. And technically, the law allows this as long as it doesn't exceed a certain decibel level. It allows any type of sound, music, sound, and why not prayer? Osman is from Somalia. He moved to the U.S. from Kenya when he was 14 years old. And he just, phenomenal activism. I'm looking forward to all the great things you're going to be doing, Jamal, in the future. Elected as Democrat to the Minneapolis City Council in August 2020, and you're going to be serving through January 2024. Make sure you also say hello, there's another Congresswoman up there, Betty McCollum. She's phenomenal.
Oh, yeah.
We hear from her all the time, too. And here's someone who's not Muslim, who's not Arab, and does so much for the Muslim and Arab community. And sometimes you wonder that somebody who's not part of our community does such great things. It's good to see that.
Yes, Ray, thank you so much. Yeah, I think Betty McCollum is great. She is a colleague and a friend, and I will, you know, we, she comes a lot, comes to our shops and drink that Somali tea, and it's just amazing to kind of see her. And I would say, the entire city, state of Minnesota, all the elected officials have been part of our community. And, you know, we have a lot to say. We vote, and we are part of society. And Betty has been great, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Jamal, listen, thank you for joining us. Jamal Osman's website is Jamal, listen, thank you for joining us. His, Jamal Osman's website is www.jamal, J-A-M-A-L, osman, O-S-M-A-N, dot org, O-R-G. And you can follow him on Twitter at Jamal Osman, M-N, from Minnesota. Jamal, listen, thank you again so much for joining me this morning. It was a real pleasure speaking with you.
Thank you so much, Ray, and uh Happy Ramadan to all of you. Uh thank you so much for having me.
Ramadan Kareem, buddy. Thank you. All right, we're gonna take a break here at the Ray Hananiah Show. And uh I have another super guest who's gonna join us. Um she's just phenomenal. I've, but we've spoken to her before on the radio show, Rawan Redwan, an Arab news reporter and regional correspondent in the Gulf, who's gonna discuss the importance of Ramadan, the celebrations taking place in Saudi Arabia and the Muslim world. So we'll dive a little bit deeper into uh Ramadan and how important it is to Muslims. I'm Ray Hananiah, and uh you're listening to the Ray Hananiah Show on uh either on WNZK AM 690 in Greater Detroit, WDMV AM 700 in Washington DC, WTOR AM 770 Radio in Ontario, Canada. And this will be rebroadcast in Chicago at 12 noon on WNWI AM 1080. This is the US Arab Radio Network. And we're sponsored by a great newspaper, the leading English language newspaper of the Middle East Arab news, where I am the US Special Correspondent. We're gonna take a quick break. And when we come back, we will be joined by Rawan Redwan, talking about Ramadan. I'm Ray Hananiah. We will be right back, right after these messages.
Arabnews.com, bringing you breaking news from across the Middle East and the latest on Arabs in America. Get inside the latest headlines with expert analysis and insights at Arabnews.com. Join over 5 million Facebook fans and over 10 million monthly readers. Arabnews.com, news that matters to you.
بعد تطعيم أكثر من ثلاثة بليين شخص حول العالم بشكل كامل بلقاء COVID-19. تمت الآن الموافقة على تلقيه الأطفال من عمر خمس إلى 11 سنة. فقد أثبتت الدراسات بعد تجارب سريرية مع أطفال حول العالم أن جرعتي اللقاء المخصصة لهم آمنة وفعالة. يصل الطبيب بطلقيه الأطفال من سن الخمسة فما فوق من أجل حماية الأصحاء منهم أو دو الظروف الصحية الصعبة. الطفل جزء من المجتمع وهو معرض لان يصاب بالفيروس ويمكن أن يحمله لعائلته ولمن حوله. احم طفلك وعائلتك ومجتمعك. لقح طفلك ليكون بامان في المدرسة أو مع العائلة والأصدقاء أثناء ممارسة الرياضة. تحدث لطبيبك واكتشف الحقائق بنفسك أو زور موقع michigan.gov/kidscovidvaccine. رسالة من وزارة الصحة والخدمات الإنسانية في ميشيجن.
At Top Rehab Physical Therapy Clinic in Dearborn, we provide effective physical therapy sessions in order to limit pain and discomfort. Top Rehab provides physical therapy care for any diagnosis prescribed by a physician. And we regularly see and treat conditions such as stroke, TMJ, fibromyalgia, sciatica, joint pain, and more. We use a variety of pain management methods, including modalities, soft tissue mobilization, and therapeutic exercise. If you're in need of physical rehabilitation or physical therapy, get the highest quality health care at Top Rehab. Most insurance is accepted and we're open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 8 to 6, Tuesday and Thursday, 8 to 5, and Saturday, 10 till 2. Call for an appointment today at 313-846-0555. That's 313-846-0555. Choose Top Rehab Physical Therapy Clinic on Michigan Avenue in Dearborn. Life's too short to be in pain. The Ray Hananiah Show is brought to you by the US Arab Radio Network and sponsored by Arab News Newspaper, the Middle East leading English language publication with print and online editions in Saudi Arabia, Dubai, France, Japan, Pakistan, England, and the United States. Listen to live radio every Wednesday at 5:00 PM Eastern in Detroit, Washington DC, New York, and Ontario, Canada. Or watch the live broadcast on facebook.com/ArabNews. The Ray Hananiah Show is rebroadcast in Chicago at 12 noon on Thursday. For more information on the radio stations, live Facebook broadcasts, and podcasts, visit Arabnews.com. And now, here's your host, columnist and US Special Correspondent for Arab News, Ray Hananiah.
And it's really very exciting to be back on radio here on Wednesday, April 6, 2022. Uh this is our second season of the Ray Hananiah Show. And of course, I love Arab News. I've been writing, I wrote for them many, many years ago for almost eight years. And then I was brought back uh about almost, I think, four, maybe five years ago now, uh by a great editor in chief, Faisal Abbas there. And uh Faisal is just phenomenal, the staff at the Arab News. And I'm really excited to have a guest from Arab News helping us understand, because I know there are a lot of Americans out there who are non-Muslim. And even some Muslims maybe who want to hear about their own religion, but to understand what Islam is all about, how it's celebrated uh in the Middle East. And to help us understand that, I invited Rawan Redwan, an Arab news reporter and regional correspondent in the Gulf, who'll discuss Ramadan with us. And, and it's important, she's been associated with the newspaper in various capacities since 2012, and is currently Arab News Deputy Section Editor and Regional Correspondent. She's written extensively on various topics in Saudi Arabia, the region, and beyond. They include interviews with the longest reigning UFC lightweight champion, Khabib Nurmagomedov. I apologize, my, the Japanese is terrible, T20 Japan Chair and ADBI Dean, uh Noyuki Yoshino, former US Army General David Petraeus, and others. She's also moderated a number of events in the Kingdom. She has a BA in English Literature and a Master's Degree in Public Health. Rawan, thank you so much for joining us. It's so great to have you back on the radio with me again and to see you.
Thank you, Ray, for having me. It's been.
Now, and Ramadan Mubarak. Now, I always assume that uh, you know, the proper way to greet a Muslim during Ramadan is say Ramadan Mubarak or Ramadan Kareem.
There are different ways of saying it, but it's all the same in the end. You know, you're celebrating a month and you're just saying Happy Ramadan or Ramadan Mubarak. So there are different ways of saying it. Ramadan Kareem is the suit, the most suited uh way to say Ramadan.
Ramadan Kareem.
Happy Ramadan. Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start using that one from now on. Because now Ramadan uh runs 30 days. It's uh, uh as I understand it, it's ninth month of the Muslim calendar. Uh and it's a holy month of fasting and it ends and begins and ends with the appearance of the crescent moon. Why is Ramadan so important uh to Muslims?
It's the holiest month of the year. It's basically the month where the pro, the, the Archangel Gabriel came down from the, from the heavens. And the, the first verse of the Quran was, you know, given to the Prophet uh in Ramadan. And uh there's a lot of spirituality um uh that is associated. So it's not just fasting or abstaining from food and drink. And no water is, we don't drink water when fasting either. So it's, it's just, it's, 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 let's say it's a package deal, right? So you're, it's a spiritual month where you get to know each, you know yourself better. You get to uh connect with the Almighty. You get to connect with your friends and family, and you get to connect with your own self. Um and of course, it's just not, and, and of course, it's also reading the Quran and reading the Prophet's um, what, what we call the Sunnah, or what the Prophet's saying is. And we understand a little bit more about our religion. And there's a lot of tranquility. There's a lot of quiet. There's a lot of peace during this month. It's, it's just a, it, it's very different from other months for some, for some reason. So you're fasting and there's just a very interesting and a very nice sense of calm about you. Your day can go, can be extremely crazy and hectic, but there's just a very nice sense of calm. And it, it's, it's about learning. It's more, it's more, it's learning to be patient. It's abstaining from anger, from jealousy, from negative thoughts. Um so, yeah.
So I know Ramadan has been accepted in the United States for probably more than the past decade, uh maybe even longer. Uh maybe going back to Bill Clinton and even before, I think, even with.
Before that, yeah.
President W H, H W Bush, George H W Bush.
It's even before that. It's way, way before that. I can't remember which president exactly, but it was uh, who's after Nixon? Forgot?
Yeah, that would be uh Gerald Ford. It might have been Gerald Ford and then Ronald Reagan.
Might have been, yeah.
And then Ronald Reagan. And then, or uh Jimmy Carter, I think, right after then. My history, that I go back a long way, but there are too many presidents to remember. But a lot of Americans, I think in the last 20 years, have really come to embrace Ramadan as an important religious event and holiday uh for Muslims. They've learned a lot about it. I still don't believe they all really understand the depth of how important it is. Can you walk us through, I mean, uh we talked about it being a month long, um from the first sighting of the crescent moon to the last sighting of the crescent moon. Um is every day the same day in terms of the way you live and what you do? Give us, what is a day like during Ramadan?
It's a, it, well, okay, um you first of, of course, uh you start off with the morning prayer, prayers, the early morning prayers, the budget prayers. So there are two. And then after that, you either take a nap and then start your day, whether you go to work, or if you're a housewife, you stay at home. The kids, of course, go to school. Uh you fast. And when I say fast, you, you fast from everything, food, drink, smoking, um everything. Um morning prayers, and then there's the early evening prayers, and then evening prayers, which is at sundown. And then, of course, the late evening prayers, which is Aisha. And then there's a series of uh prayers that are called Taraweeh, uh um that can go from two to 21 um rakaas. When I say rakaas, it's like when you bow down. Um the day is a very calm day. You go to work, you're, you know, doing your thing. It's, it's just business as usual. Um in the Middle East, a lot of countries are actually um decrease the, the amount of time you spend at the workplace. So instead of an eight-day, eight-hour workday, you have a six-hour workday. And this is not just in Saudi Arabia. I think this is in many, many Arab countries uh who observe uh the, the whole month. Um I think a lot of people during their break times or, you know, just take some time to read the Quran, uh read a book of prayers, um or just literally sit down and meditate. And when I say meditate, I don't mean, you know, the yoga meditation. I mean, just reflecting and, you know, just sitting by themselves and, you know, finding that calm and zen and, you know, maybe praying a little prayer, saying a little prayer uh with, they have their prayer beads or not. Um like I said earlier, it's a very calm, normal day. And come sundown, that's when the celebration starts. So um Ramadan is not just a month of fasting. It's a month of connecting with family and friends. And there's a lot of food involved. We're Arabs. We know.
We love food.
It's basically Christmas.
I love to cook. My wife looks at me and says, why are you always trying to do the cooking? The kitchen is for me. And I say, no, you know what? I love to cook. So you're right. We Arabs and Muslims and Christian Arabs, we do love our food. So there's a certain time in the evening then, right, where you can break the fast. Is that referred to as the iftar when you sit down and eat? Or, and is that every day?
Yes, it is every single day. Of course, the timing differs according to when the sun sets. Um and uh as my, your, your earlier guest mentioned, uh you hear the call of prayer, the Adhan. And here in Saudi Arabia, you hear it everywhere. Um and you watch it, of course, on TV in Mecca or Medina. But you hear it everywhere and you break your fast with something as simple as a date. And the, the Sunnah, or the way the Prophet did it, was three dates and some water. So traditionally, here in Saudi, we have um Arabic coffee, three dates, or different, or whatever amount of dates that you want, of course. And uh there's extra condiments on the side. So you have cream and you have tahini on the side. So it's just an extra thing. Of course, different drinks, uh water is essential. And then you do, and then you perform the prayers. And after you perform the prayers, then the real feast begins. So you got a table for, yeah.
I was gonna say, that's why dates are considered so important. Because whenever I hear Ramadan, I hear about uh dates. And there are a number of big majdul, majdul dates, I believe they're referred to.
Uh what you guys know is majdul. Uh we have different types of dates here. Um.
Yeah, we're limited in the United States.
Yeah.
We're limited, believe me. We do not get the breadth of the uh diversity in what you have. Believe me, I love the Arab world, and I'd love to see more of that here. But dates are sim, are symbolic a little bit, aren't they?
Very much symbolic, yes. Yes, very much symbolic. They have some health benefits as well. So while you're fasting, your sugar level, of course, decreases. Uh and throughout, and the, the more you fast, the more your body tries to adjust, but it cannot adjust without any sustenance. So the dates provide sustenance from the get-go. So there, I mean, it's believed to be three. So the saying is, or the phenomenon is, it's a, the saying is, first will increase your sugar level, the second will regulate it, or, or the third will regulate it, something like that. I'm not sure. I'm not a doctor. I can't, there are no studies about that. But I believe that the Sunnah is three. So we follow the Prophet.
So three dates.
And we have three, three dates.
When you break the fast. I'm, now, I love dates. I eat them all the time. Now, I noticed that uh many of my Christian relatives in the Middle East are very respectful of Ramadan. And they fast also, even though it isn't required of them. The restaurants, they, they open them late. Um you know, they don't open them during the day. They don't eat in public. You know, you don't want to be eating in front of somebody who's fasting. So there's a lot of respect, I think, uh from the Christian religion uh to Muslims. Now, Saudi Arabia is so important in all of this, isn't it? You have two of the most important holy sites. And what is the connection between Ramadan and those two holy sites for Muslims around the world?
Um well, first, well, I think it's, it's important throughout the whole year. It's not just Ramadan. Uh but let's start off with um, as I mentioned earlier, the Archangel Gabriel came down from the heavens and the first verses of the Quran were, were given to the Prophet. So that, and while he was in Mecca, in one of the mountains, in a cave called Hera. Uh and that's a, that's, it's not considered as a holy site, but a lot of Muslims like, pilgrims like to go and see where this whole, where it happened. Um of course, it's a protected area and there are designated tour groups and tour guides that will take you. And then, so the holy, the Mecca, the holy city of Mecca, how holds the, the grand mosque, where the Kaaba is, the cubic uh looking structure with the black um uh curtains. Uh and that's also, that was actually built by the Prophet Abraham. And nearby, there are two hilltops called Safa and Marwa. And between that, there was also a well called Dandam Well, where when the Prophet Abraham left uh to look for food and water, his wife Hazir and his wife Ismail, or Ishmael, uh were left behind. And while he was, you know, the mother, Hazir was going back and forth between these two hills seven times, and the child was crying. And while he was kicking on the ground, it's believed that the water started like, you know, a spring and a sprout, the water was sprouting from the ground. So that's an also holy site. Um so you can imagine just how small the area is and how everything comes about. So that's the Safa and Marwa, where pilgrims go back and forth seven times, the cube, uh which is the Kaaba. Pilgrims go around that also counterclockwise seven times as well to perform something called the Ummah. Um one of the things that are interesting during the month of Ramadan is if you do perform Ummah, um the saying is that it's as if you performed Ummah with the Prophet or Hajj with the Prophet. Uh I'm not 100% sure, but they believe that. And there's a lot of um um cleansing during that month. There's a lot of cleansing and lots, a lot of like positive energy, just performing Ummah, fasting, or, or witnessing and performing the Taraweeh, the evening prayers. Something about that whole scene, Ray, I've, I've tried, I've been there a couple of times before and I've prayed during the month of Ramadan over there, over there as well. And I performed Ummah there as well. The unity, I think, I believe it's the unity. It's how everyone is all united and they all break their fast at the same time. They're all breaking fast with the, with the dates and water or the yogurt drink. It's, it's just everyone's in unison. It's, it's a beautiful feeling. Um I don't think you'll ever find it anywhere else in the world. And same goes for the, for the city of Medina, where the Prophet's mosque is. A lot of pilgrims uh go visit the Prophet's uh grave there. And they just go and say a little prayer. Um and they pray in an area called De Rouda. Uh De Rouda is what is believed, what was believed to be the Prophet's house, where he actually built his house. And that area, it's a very small squ-. where he actually built his house. And that area, it's a very small square area. They believe that, we believe that, any prayer that we pray in that area will go straight to the Almighty and will be heard. Of course, it's not just that area. Of course, the holy month of Ramadan, the heavens are open, and any prayer you pray throughout the day is heard by the Almighty. And that's the beauty of it, and it's just something extra special.
It does sound beautiful. And I can see how it would strengthen people to find, that people during this whole month would find strength in this, to be better people, to be better individuals. You had mentioned that you had visited there many times. So men and women also go there to pray, correct?
Of course, of course, all year long. And it's extra special during the month of Ramadan. And you, now that COVID is almost over, at least I hope it is, Saudi Arabia has lifted restrictions from, for entering the Kingdom. And there, your pilgrims are no longer, or travelers, basically, are no longer required to, to show any kind of COVID vaccine certificate or.
Has it returned to the levels of pre-coronavirus?
We're not, I'm not sure. We're getting there because we are at full capacity. The presidency of the two holy mosques have expanded or increased in terms of the capacity. No, there are no longer social distancing. The only thing that's required is to keep the mask on inside the mosque, you know, for caution and, you know, for protection. But everything is semi-back to normal. I mean, if you open the, any TV channel right now, that, or you Google, or YouTube, the, in your Grand Mosque in Mecca, you will see almost at full capacity.
Wow. And I, I have many friends that have gone there during Ramadan, and they've come back with the title Hajj. And is that anytime, is that anytime during the year? Or is it because they go during Ramadan because it's a special time of the year to do that? In other words, can they, I don't understand the title. I, I think I do from, you just have given a brilliant explanation of Ramadan and the importance of Ramadan and the two, the two holy sites in Saudi Arabia. But do they get that, can they get that title anytime during the year by visiting the, these holy sites, or just during Ramadan?
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a term that we say to just about everyone who visits the mosques and perform Umrah or perform Hajj. I mean, it's just, it's not a joke, but it is kind of like, I mean, it's a, it's a term of the year.
So it's just basically somebody, it's a signif, it's a designation that somebody has been there and back.
Yeah.
To wherever they're at.
And I'm sure most of your male friends returned with their heads shaven. So, I mean, that's also part of the ritual in order to complete your Umrah at, in Mecca. You have to shave your head or cut off some areas in your hair, just to break away from wearing the white cloth. For men, they wear the two pieces of white cloth. Again, that, that, that color is a significant color in Islam. It's a sign of, it's a color of peace. And all male pilgrims wear it as a sign of unity. So it doesn't matter what, what nationality you are, you know, you're, you're here at the House of God performing a ritual that's required of you at least once in your life, for those who are able to, of course. And it's just a, it's an interesting term, Haji.
I just hear it so often. They're so proud, believe me, and I respect it. They come back and they want to be called Hajj, Ni'mur, or Hajj.
Yeah.
Or Hajj, Hajj Mahmoud. I have so many friends, I know they're very proud, and I think I understand it more. It's like a verification that they, that they did this. Is, is it a requirement of every Muslim to do this?
A requirement for those who are able to. Of course, there are exceptions to the rule. Though, there are those who, for example, aren't financially able to or are too ill. It's a requirement, and if you can't do it, you can actually have someone else do it for you. So let's say your son, or your daughter, or your cousin, you can basically tell them, please, you can ask them to, and you do have an excuse. So it's not strictly, it is very important to perform both Hajj and Umrah once in your lifetime. But if you can't, then you're excused, and someone else can take that responsibility for you.
I think Islam is a very tolerant religion, and it's beautiful. And I think that, I know we could go on forever talking about this, because there's so much detail that I would love for Americans to hear and understand. You know, when they see people like you, they need to see us. And when they see you, Arab women, playing leading roles the way you do, it breaks these sad, tragic stereotypes that we often turn to when we don't understand things. So Rowan, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to have had you on this program this afternoon here. I know it's early in the morning by you. It's very kind of you to take time, you know, out of your late evening to join us and talk about such an important topic. Any final thoughts before I let you go and say thank you? Anything I didn't ask about?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for having me again in the show. I mean, it's been a while since I've been back. And, you know, even for those who are non-Muslims, you know, if you know a Muslim friend, or you know someone who is Muslim, why not practice? Why not, you know, and join in with the fasting? So if not fasting or abstaining from food and water, how about you try to, you know, adjust your behavior? Or learn a little bit about the holy month and why is it so holy? I mean, you know, you can, you can get, you know, good practices are adopted, you know, you can relinquish bad habits. It's very much like meditation. Just sit and reflect, you know? That's, that's all it is. That's what we love doing. This month is, is a very hectic month. It's very difficult because we are fasting, and we're not drinking water or eating. But there's just a sense of calm, and we'd love for everyone to just at least try it, whether you are Christian, Jewish, Muslim, or not. You know, just, why not?
All right. Rowan Redwan, editor and a great writer, regional correspondent, Arab News reporter in the Gulf, who's joined us this, this afternoon here in Chicago, Detroit, Washington DC, Ontario, and in rebroadcast on Chicago Radio. Rowan, thank you again so much for taking the time to join us. It's just such a pleasure always to speak with you. And I look forward to seeing you and Faisal and everybody at the Arab News offices when I visit there, hopefully later this year. Thank you so much, Rowan. We appreciate it. And I want to thank everybody for listening to our first broadcast of the second season of the Ray Hanania Show, brought to you by the US Arab Radio Network and sponsored by Arab News Newspaper, Arabnews.com. We've been broadcasting on four, three live radio stations and one in rebroadcast tomorrow. And also online at Arabradio.us and on Facebook at facebook.com/ArabNews. So if you missed any part of this, you can go to facebook.com/ArabNews and watch the entire program. I want to thank Jamal Osman and Rowan Redwan for joining me. I'm Ray Hanania. And I hope you'll join us again next week when we talk about the importance of Easter to the Christian Arab community. Have a great week, everybody, and Ramadan Kareem. Bye-bye.